Calls to order the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs. City Clerk, can you call the wrong?
Councilwoman Libby?
Here.
Councilwoman Libby?
Here.
Chairwoman?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or any transmit -- any meeting through any mediums. Attendees therefore advise that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether pursuant or unperceived by the present and deemed knowledge and permissible. Item number one, citizens' input. Anyone here like this?
Madam Chairman?
Clerk, Carrie Lima. Carrie Lima? You can share that, or you can wait till we open up the meeting. You'll have longer -- a longer time to do that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Council Palatier.
You know, the neighbors are here. I mean, I'm not going to hold them to three minutes.
I agree with you, Council Palatier.
I mean, you know, they're signing that thing, but they're here as objection to the business, and, you know, we want to hear what they've got to say. And I don't think they'll be able to say it in three minutes, to be honest with you.
I agree with you 100 percent. So, anybody here not for -- item number three, that would like to speak at citizens' input? Well, let's make a motion to accept the minutes for September 27 meeting. Item number two.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Motion approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Item number three, resolution to discuss the public health concerns on 222 Peckham Street. The resolution was filed by Council Palatier. Council Palatier, if you want to come down to the table? Whereas numerous complaints have been received regarding the property located on 222 Peckham Street, whereas several junk and inoperable vehicles are stored on the property allowing rodents to breed and multiply, whereas trucks are used to transport seafood and frequently cleaned, leaving seafood debris on the ground that is not being removed, and whereas residents adjacent to the property are continuously working to control the rodent population and living with foul odors and rotting seafood, and whereas many citizens have been issued by various departments regarding violations of the code of the city of Fall River, therefore now be it resolved that the City Council Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene to discuss important public health concerns.
All right. I got involved in this a while ago, I guess, and I think the city of Fall River was too. You got a special packet that was made this morning. I sat down Mr. Hathaway, the bill inspector, and he made this for us tonight to show what's been happening there. And you got some dates going back to 218. And he had the store on South Main Street all in good, and he basically bought that. I mean, I can't talk for him. It was supposed to be two parked trucks there, and then there was this thing and this thing. Then he sold it. Next thing you know, you've got trucks coming in, backing into the dock. Well, you don't back into the dock if you've got a can of tuna fish. I mean, you back up because you've got something. He wasn't, I understand, moving crabs around and all that stuff. And the neighbors have been complaining and complaining. So, this is it. We're trying to square this away. We had Lauren, the clerk of committees, called Boston for me to see what's going on and what permits that he needs. And she's talking to some young lady in Boston. She called her back today with a little bit of information, but she's going to make a package so we know where we stand with this. As far as the city is concerned, I don't know if they've got permits or not permits. It seems to me that he's had no permits to do anything. He just moved in and does what he wants. And the neighbors come down and speak, and it's noise, leaving refrigeration running early in the morning. It's the odors. It's the mice, the rats. And the neighbors, they tell me there's raccoons in there and everything. So, I don't know if it's a zoo, or fish, or whatever he's doing in there. And so, we're trying to square this away. So, we've got a few other people tonight that will speak on it, so I'm going to yield for now.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to have any of the neighbors that want to come down and talk on the matter come down to the council floor. Glenn, would you like to come down? Is the owner of the property here?
Yes.
Would you like to come down as well? Thank you. Can start off by saying, stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Carrie Lima. I live at 248 Peckham Street. My parents own the property, the one on the first floor. My brother lives on the third floor.
Thank you very much.
Victor De Silva, I'm the owner of 84 Barrett Street and 222 Peckham Street.
Thank you.
Glenn Hathaway, City of Fall -- Building Commissioner, City of Fall River.
Paul Bernier, 91 Woolley Street, Fall River.
Thank you. Why don't we start with you?
I prefer him to go.
Do you want to go first? Okay.
The Bernier family has lived at 91 Woolley Street for over 67 years. We've had Hoods Ice Cream in that building before, coffee stand, food service. So, we've always had a business in our backyard, always. Lisbon's issue began when they first moved their trucks onto the property. Refrigeration units, as Mr. Palatier said, units operating all time of the day and night. I contacted with Lisbon by phone, spoke to a female, said that she would do something about it. Never stopped. Several noise citations were issued by the police, and eventually it did stop. Noticed Lisbon was using the building more and more, and the odor of decaying seafood was in the air. On warmer days, when there is a south or west wind, the stench becomes so bad that we, as a family, can no longer use our backyard, and that resulted in us calling the city several times. Box trucks and trailers are left at the loading dock. The rear cargo door is ajar. It produces much of a lingering stench, and it comes from those inside of those trucks. We've witnessed men on the docks watering down the box trucks, the trailers with water hose, spilling the debris onto the pavement. Photo of that. And they come in our yard during the night. Squirrels live inside the building. They produce offspring on the, which will be the east side, and then the birds are nesting inside the building as well on the south side. There's a trailer parked against our dividing fence, not used for transportation, but only for storage. Rear door always open, swinging back and forth whenever there's wind. It just slams against the door and against the side all the time. There's now a box truck parked on the property with the top of the cargo area most likely shared off, most likely from impact with the bridge. The property's a junkyard, and it's debris everywhere, and the odor is not -- you just can't detect that. It's not fair to my family or to the Leonardo family for this not to be able to use our yard, because they don't care, and they don't care. I have video of them using the hose to water down the truck. I have them on video as well throwing buckets inside there with water, and the buckets are going onto the ground. We have pictures of the rats. We have pictures of the raccoons, and we have pictures of where the squirrels and the birds live.
Can we see the video?
Video. Here's the video of them washing down. It's about 40 seconds. Second video is with the bucket. Third video will be with the bucket.
It's not. It's an exclamation point. Download error.
It's good.
Zoom in there and download it. I put on my glasses.
Lieutenant.
Technical assistant over there. We'll move on to the rodents, the raccoon on the building, and just slide the pictures along. They live behind the facade. They climb up through the facade up toward the roof.
Is that your backyard with the pool or something?
Yes.
Would you also send these to Madam Clerk?
I'll have my technical assistant do that.
Can you see these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the truck with the door open?
Yeah.
The one that, is that parked there?
Yeah, that's the one with the door open.
That one has the door open, but they all do. They all have the door open. This one opens to the side. The others open up toward the roof.
Someone with the roof off.
What is this one?
Is that a bird?
That's the, that's where the birds live, and they live inside that hole. That's where the squirrels live, inside that hole. You can see that the debris running down there from the squirrels. And then the additional... You can see where there's other unregistered vehicles that have just parked there. It's a little hard to see it, but you can see that there are other...
Does here?
There are other vehicles right here with the air conditioning unit on top. They stay with there. They never been out. They came in when they first opened, and they had to tow it out seven years later.
So then they can send them to the clerk. Have you seen these?
No.
Mr. De Silva? You want to share them so we can feel what we're talking about?
You want to see them?
Sure.
Do you yield, Mr.?
I'll rest.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Carrie Lima. My family has happily lived at 24 -- owned 248 Peckham Street for the past 47 years. It's been a good community with good neighbors until Lisbon's seafood opened up. I have a non-verbal severely autistic 11-year-old child who is cognitively at the level of a four-year-old. She's homeschooled. She greatly enjoys spending time in our small backyard. We share an adjacent fence, which is the truck that has the swinging doors. It's parked against our fence. She loves being outside, playing on her sensory swings and her toys. But since Lisbon's seafood moved in, we've dealt with horrible stench. It's horrible, in the summer especially. It's so bad that we've got to go indoors. Like you mentioned, overpopulation of rodents and mice, raccoons, squirrels because of the trash. The property itself is just unkept. He doesn't have footage of it, but on the opposite side, there's a boat, and there's just metal boxes all piled up to the top of the fence. We've witnessed loud arguing, swearing amongst the coworkers on the loading docks, just trucks running day and night, moving product. Ms. Pam, I don't know if you remember me, but I sent video to you in the middle of the night from the second floor of my phone showing video of the goings-on next door. And then in 2019, a large truck carrying crabs was backing up into Lisbon's seafood gate, and they crashed into my car, my Elantra, and they totaled it because they bent the metal frame. So, the car was totaled. The business has become basically a junkyard in a decent residential community. We're told to file complaints with the proper channels, and we've done that multiple times, following those instructions, but unfortunately, not much has happened. And as a concerned citizen and a special needs mom, this business is unsafe, and it's unsanitary in that area, and unfair. I'm kindly and respectfully asking that a resolution be made so that we can begin to enjoy our neighborhood again like we used to.
Do you yield?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva, would you?
Carrie, can you pass the microphone to Mr. De Silva, please?
Well, there was an issue in the beginning. When we first got there, we were transferring product from truck to truck. And then, she's going back to 2019. We're in 2023. 2022, there hasn't been any incidents of any kind of any to the Board of Health for at least eight months now. Okay? We've been trying to control the problem. I can't do anything about, I mean, I didn't even know there was these, these animals on our roof. This is the first time I see it. Rats, I haven't seen a rat in the building. I've asked for an inspection last week for them to come down. When I got the letter, asked for an inspection, they denied an inspection. I wanted to show me if there's issues so I can take care of them the right way. They wouldn't allow an inspection. They said, "We're just going to go down to the, to this meeting and go over it all."
Could you ask?
I ask.
Right.
Yep. He said no. I actually called Bob, Bob De Soto, first, and he was sitting with the inspector, so they denied it. I have, I do have a truck there that was just hit last week, ran into a bridge up in Boston, but nothing is being brought to that facility, nothing. It's all storage. It's all boxes. It's lobster traps. We mend them. We fix them. We send them back up to Newport. Everything that's being rinsed is being rinsed up in Newport now at the dock. We own two boats, two fishing vessels, and that's what we do. We, we've gotten, we've sold Lisbon Seafood on Globe Corners, which was where we originally were. We started there in 1975. My dad before me, 10 years, and I took, and I took over for another 37 years. We're very familiar with smells and problems with, with issues with these type of issues. I've, yes, as it has happened, where trucks come in, the guys open the doors, and they shouldn't. They open the doors, and there is, there is a smell. They try to clean them. That's probably what he has on video, where they take bleach and scrub the truck down, clean it up. We've, we've tried to maintain as much as, as best as we can that area. I have gone in there plenty of times now. I haven't seen anything on the ground. We've cleaned up the vegetation. I don't see any rats. I don't know where they get rats from, but there isn't a rat in my building, not one. We have containers. We have boxes everywhere.
Well, he clearly has pictures of them.
Well, he has one rat there. I have, there's none. I mean, you can, I'll send, you know, a pest control guy in there, but there isn't none. The raccoon, I wasn't even aware of that. That's, they're not, you know, I don't know if they're there because of any smell. I don't, I don't think. The boxes that we use, the empty crates, they're pretty much dry when they come in. I don't know what else. The trucks, I have one, two, three, four trucks there. They're all registered trucks. We use it for storage. At one time, we used to put them on Globe Street. We started getting the police department to start tagging them. They were starting getting tickets. So, I figured I'd bring it into a property, into an area, and now it's something else. And I understand the issues and the validated issues at some of those things, and the best I can do is to take care of them. And that's, you know, that's what, you know, like I said, I wanted inspection to go ahead and have the city tell me, okay, this is, this is the issue we have. I mean, Glenn, Glenn called it a junkyard the other day, and I said, "Listen, you know, yes, I have boxes all over, all over the place, but there's nothing that's there junk to throw away. It's all storage. It's all storage." There's lobster, there's lobster boxes, lobster crates. There's fish vats stacked up. There's totes. There's barrels, all types of stuff, but it's all fishery stuff. There's nothing that's going to stink, smell, or make that type of problem. Yes, I eliminated, tried to eliminate, I tried to eliminate the box trucks being open. There is one trailer that's open on his side of the property that's got nothing in it. It's just open. And the reason we've left that door open is because every once in a while, I'd see somebody looking over the fence, looking what was going on. And I said, "You know what? Just leave that door open so nobody's really looking," you know. And I understand the guys on the dock. I get it. You know, they're hanging, they're hanging out or whatever. They have some exchange words back and forth, I'm sure. You know what I mean? I'm not going to deny that. And I'll put, I'll try to put a handle on that also, obviously. I really don't know what else I can do on my end, and like I said, you know, I'm here to, to be able to make it better.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, just a couple of things. You said that you don't have, you weren't washing trucks there anymore, but then you said that they are washing down trucks there with bleach. I mean...
They must have, yeah. Not lately. I haven't, I've told them that all the trucks have been cleaned up up in Newport. I don't know how old that video is. That's, that was my question. I wanted to know how old it is. You know, you have a video. It's, we had an issue in the beginning, yes, and I tried to, you know, every time Bob De Soto's been down there, he's told me, "Ellis, and this is the issue. Somebody called about this." I go down, I take care of it, you know, and there is no, no transactions being going on there. There's no fish being brought in anymore. There's no seafood being brought in, not...
Where are the crab legs from, then?
Crab legs is probably in the crates, in, you know, like when they, when they empty the crabs.
Which would cause a horrific smell, is what they're smelling in the neighborhood.
Well, you'd have to have an abundance of them. And there was, when I was bringing trailers to that facility, but I'm not, I'm not doing that anymore. So, there shouldn't be.
Councilwoman Libby? I just have a few questions for you. You said that this is all being washed in Newport now. When did, when did you switch to doing that in Newport?
About eight months ago, six to eight months ago.
So, then to the residents, Carrie and Lieutenant, last summer, was the smell better over the...
No, no. It's just recently smelled it, just recently. Even in cold weather, we've smelled it just recently.
So, could that be from the crates that are outside? I know you said that they've been cleaned out and dried. So, two questions. Could that be from those crates that are outside? Have you seen trucks still coming?
Last time Bob De Soto called me, which was, I think, it might have been September or October, there was a truck that came in with empty barrels, and those barrels were bait barrels. He called me, and I went down, and they took them away. That was the last time they called. And that was, that was it. I'm not, you know...
I know you're here to...
I'm not saying the place is perfect. I'm not saying that, and I'm not trying to use that place as a facility. I noticed a lot of feedback in that area. It's a neighborhood like, like the inspector said, and I understand. There's neighborhoods all over the city. You know, I dealt with a fish market on Globe for Corners for, you know, 37 years. I know, you know, and we've had chemicals and products and ZEP and, you know, all kinds of stuff done to be able to live in that, to be able to work in that neighborhood. I mean, you go by David's Fish Market, you drive by there. You smell seafood. You smell fish. There's no getting around from that. But like I said, at 222 Peckham Street...
So, do you, have you, do the neighbors smell it lately, even in the cold?
Yeah, just recently.
Just recently. But have you seen any activity there recently?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what are they doing there if they're there?
They were there yesterday, so about 1:00 or so.
What are they doing?
I can't see. Cut the box.
We work, we work, they work on gear, on pots, on pumps. If you go inside the building, you'll see what's, what's being worked on.
And so, my other question...
There's nothing, there's nothing, there's no fishing, there's no seafood.
So, I feel like some of these things could be easy fixes. Obviously, if one truck was damaged and the roof's off, and that's why it's there, it's going to be repaired? Or...
Yeah, insurance is working on it. I should have a meeting. I called Donald Maderas, actually, today, insurance agency about it.
And then the one that has the door open, I understand your reasoning for leaving the door open, but can, can we do something so that it's not banging in the...
I can close that door. That's not, that's not an issue.
And then as far as the boxes and crates, I know you said they're there, and they're kind of everywhere, and they're for storage. Can you put those in the building?
Yeah, there's, there's some in the building already. I have...
But the ones that are outside, can you...
I'll have to look and see which ones are outside. I don't have, there's nothing, that, that's the reason why I called. I was calling Bob De Soto to come down and inspect, because there's, there's nothing out there that's, that has any smell at all. I don't, I don't see anything. If you, I mean, I let you go inside the building if you want. I let you go outside the building. You tell me. You let me and see. I mean, you know, I don't see anything. I mean, if there's, there's something, I'll...
I'd like to find out, to hear from our...
I'll do whatever it takes, takes to be, to be good with the neighbors, obviously.
I'd like to hear from our billing inspector, and then if he could set up an inspection and can figure this out.
Absolutely.
So, I will yield for now. Councilwoman Pereira?
I have a question. When you sat down, you said that you gave two addresses. One was Barrett Street and Peckham Street. What's at Barrett Street? Do you have a location there as well?
It's just the entrance. The entrance to the building is, is two addresses.
On Barrett Street, so there's two addresses. Do you live around there? Where do you live?
I don't live. I live in Tiverton.
You live in Tiverton?
Yeah.
What permits do you have for this building?
There is no permits.
You have no permits to...
No.
Have trucks or use it as a storage area or anything like that? There's no permits needed for that?
No. However, when Lisbon bought this building, he was advised by me to go before the zoning board of appeals for a variance, requesting permission to store or use the building or the property for anything related to fish or seafood or anything of such. He was preparing to do that. This is going back to when he first started.
Okay. The advice you gave me was not to move my business into that building, and I went that way. I was going to move it completely, and then I decided not to because there was so much feedback from the neighborhood to do such a business, so I says no. So, I'm just going to use it for storage, and that's what I do. I don't do, I don't do any transactions there. I don't have, I don't bring in seafood anymore. I did in the first month that I was there, but I don't do that anymore. I don't bring in product. I try not to bring in just empty trucks, and I store them overnight, and that's all.
But there's people that are working there.
Correct.
Whatever they're working on. Whatever they're working on, there's lobster pots or fish vats, whatever you bring in.
Right.
That's not just for storage because people are cleaning them there. You have a workforce there. So you're doing more than just storage. It's not really fair to your neighbors that there is this stench. And for you to say, as you said a little while ago, you go by Dave's Fish Market and you're, I'm there every Friday for fish and chips. And it does, there is no odor there. Everything is in the back. Everything is clean.
It's in the back.
There is no odor there.
I deliver there also. So I, I know.
And it's very clean.
It's in the back. Yeah, it's very clean. I'm not, and that's.
So there's not, there's not a stench there. But the stench that's here isn't because of selling the fish or like it was at a fish market, but it's all of the debris that comes from those trucks. Where in Newport are you washing these trucks?
They're, they're on the Fish Pier, State Fish Pier.
On the State Fish Pier?
Mm-hmm.
They allow you to wash them there?
Correct.
And when do you wash them there? How often?
Every time we have product. We, we have products once a week.
So once a week, you're there?
Mm-hmm.
And they get washed out there?
Correct.
So the product stays there?
No, the product is, is delivered.
So where do you deliver the product to?
Everywhere.
Different fish markets?
Correct.
So then when the truck comes to Peckham Street, now you gotta wash it. Because you just delivered all your products.
No, it goes to, it goes to Newport. That's what it does.
The truck goes back to Newport empty to be washed there?
Correct.
It's a lot of money and gas going back and forth.
Well, the, the thing is, we, we keep two of them up there all the time. We trade them back and forth all the time. There's, there's, there's two trucks that are kept up Newport. There's a freightliner truck, most of the time is up in Newport. The, the one smaller one I have. So we go back and forth all the time. And it's not like, it's multiple trucks. Like this week, product came in, trailer went, went up from Canada to pick up the crabs and they were, and they straight went to Canada, Prince Edward Island. I didn't even get to do any deliveries. I didn't do anything. So it's, it's always different. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not like.
It's just difficult for us as councils to get these complaints from residents.
Correct.
And if you look at, this is all the complaints that we've gotten. I mean, you've paid a lot of money in fines along the years to do this, but it's, you know, it's just not fair to the neighbors that something's not being done. And there's many times here that the city has gone out, Mr. Hathaway or Mr. DeSoto, they've gone out and said, you need to do this and this and this. And if you did that, then you wouldn't get a fine. But you're getting fines. So that tells me that things are not being done quick enough or?
I didn't get any fines.
There's no fines?
No.
So.
Wasn't there fines?
If you would allow me.
Sure.
Do you yield, Counsel President?
I do. I'd like to do.
Yes, thank you.
But on this one here, it says that it was a $300 fine.
Yes.
There's several like that.
Yes.
So we didn't, never paid them?
Probably not.
I would like, you was, you were, your last statement, you were saying you had advised him to do something when he first opened the business in 2017. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yes. I was, uh, I advised him at the time that he needed to go for a zoning opinion, a variance, in order to operate a fish of any type, whether it be storage, cleaning, whatever. Okay? His business plans were for that location. Um, he asked me at the time, can I store a truck there? Yeah, you can. That's what the building is. It's all, it was a warehouse, storage facility. Yeah, you can store a truck there. Does that mean you can store fish and crabs legs and rinse them out there? No. Okay? It's storage. It doesn't entitle you to wash stuff there. That doesn't mean that a company like Robinson Supply, a plumbing company, is not washing their trucks in their yard. But they're also not carrying fish every day. So the liquid that comes off the truck and sits around in the yard or the drains is what's fermenting on hot days and irritating the neighborhood. Yes. We've been down there, I can't begin to tell you how many times, in the summer months especially, when the weather's warm, when the we, wind's blowing the right way and he's doing the right thing. He's washing his trucks in the early days. And in the early days, we would go down there, the guys would, I'd call them up and send them down there and they'd give them a warning, give them a verbal warning. They'd try to work with them, correct the situation. And that's how it started. And eventually it got to the point where I got frustrated and I said, no, stop citing them. You can no longer just talk to them. Yes, I'm not saying he, he doesn't correct the problem. Okay? He corrects the problem that day and two weeks later he's back at it again. And it's not him. It's his employees. But he controls his employees. So I'm not blaming Victor. But he is responsible for his employees. So, in order to get the message to the employees, I advised, I insisted that every time an inspector went down there, they cited him. Now, who got the citation? Has it been paid? I have, I can't vouch for that. Okay? Um, I do know that he's been cited and that's through my frustration of going down there and getting no results and having the neighbors call, uh, continuously. So, two things. I advised him early on to go get a variance in order to do anything with fishery or seafood or any of that such for that location. He chose to back out of the zoning, uh, I think he scheduled a meeting, got on the agenda and he backed out with his attorney at the last, at minutes or an hour before. I, I can't remember the exact details. But he chose to back, to withdraw. Uh, so we've done that course and I'm about to do it again because now he's carried more stuff since he sold Globe Four Corners. So he is storing more stuff now than ever related to the fish or the seafood business than ever before. Now, does it have an odor? I, I can't go up to it and smell it. It, it, they're plastic containers. They've been washed. They've been cleaned. But the place, if I was the neighbors, I'd be concerned about the, the, uh, the looks of the place. It's just, it's cluttered. It's, and, and there's some overgrowth along the neighbor's side of trees and shrubs that don't get cleaned up. That's disturbing. That's why you're getting the rodents, uh, or where they're coming from or where they're harboring. Uh, there was a truck buried in some of my pitches that I supplied the council. Uh, he, it's been there for a number of years. I don't even know if it's still there. It's probably got trees growing through it by now, for all I know. Um, he responds. He corrects the situation today. And next week he's back at it again. Okay? And it's not Victor himself. Again, it's his employees. But he's responsible for his employees. He's responsible for what goes on in the yard because he's the owner.
How come, I guess I don't understand the process. He's not made to go and get a variance, like every other business?
It's about time I did my job.
Yeah. Because I think that needs to happen. I mean, and then that, he goes, that process would be what? He sits in front of the, the zoning board, correct?
Correct, correct. So Victor asked for a, an inspection by the Board of Health, one of the Board of Health inspectors, Food and Milk inspectors, a couple of days ago. And I happened to be with him at the time the call come in. And I refused to give it because he wanted a clean bill of health to come before you people tonight and say, show that, that the place was clean and.
That's not what I, that's not what I asked for.
You asked for an inspection?
Correct. And I wasn't looking for a clean bill of health. I was looking for a guidance of what you were looking for and what I need to.
We've been giving you guidance right along. Crab legs, anything to do with seafood, anything to do with odors from the fishery business. That's the guidance we've been giving you. What it keeps coming back to haunt us.
Yeah.
So how, um, how would he go about getting a variance? How would that happen?
I will, uh, send him a letter.
Okay.
Requesting, uh, cease and desist at that location for anything to do with seafood or, uh, uh, fisheries.
Fishery.
Anything related to that. Uh, perhaps even parking trucks there that are related to, uh, hauling seafood or, or anything of that such nature. And, um, he'll have to take and hire an attorney and go before the zoning board and, and get approval for this. Um, I will, based on some of the decisions here, I guess, uh, I really need to sit, sit back and, and, uh, enforce his only ordinance that I was hoping he'd rectify before this point. But he hasn't.
Yeah, this has been going on since 2017.
And, and through my frustration, he's been cited. He's been, and he, and he takes care of things for a couple of weeks. So I think the neighbors will vouch for that. But then he's back at it again. But now that he's closed Globe Street, um, and he's stockpiling all kinds of stuff over there, it seems to be, uh, getting worse. So.
Counsel, do you yield? Counsel O'Leary?
I make a motion that we table this. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to talk?
Yeah.
No, let him speak first.
Why did you not go through with the variance before?
Um, the variance was for a complete seafood facility. I, I didn't, that's not what I wanted to do in that area because like I said, I was getting a lot of feedback from the neighborhood. So I says, I told the attorney to back out and just use the building for storage.
And that was way in the beginning in 2017?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, storage and washing the trucks, but you're no longer gonna wash the trucks there. They're being washed in Newport. That part I understand. But there's.
There is, I, I don't understand what I'm gonna be going in front of a variance for.
So, um, is there something in our ordinance that if it is a seafood business that you need to have a variance?
So the area or the building.
Yeah.
Um, has a classification by, by, uh, by our, um, tax records as a commercial wholesale warehouse.
Okay.
Storage facility. Okay? And as such, there was a, you have a copy, I think, in your, in your, in the packet that I prepared for you, um, that, that gives the zoning.
Okay.
Now, that zoning dates back prior to the early days of the warehouse being built. And it's allowed to remain. What is, so it's, it, let's consider it a local business, okay? As a warehouse storage facility. Um, it doesn't entitle you to bring in seafood and anything of that such that's gonna cause a nuisance to the neighbors or the neighborhood. Uh, and that's my problem with the zoning issue. Um, he has, okay, so he can bring in a fifty foot, a fifty-three foot trailer or one of his trucks and he leaves, in the summertime, he leaves the refrigeration unit running.
Running, yeah.
All night. And he has to to keep this, the product from, from going bad. That is run by diesel fuel, I'm assuming. And it's annoying just listening to it. You, if I was on either side, I'd be shutting it off somehow because it's running all night long. That is not what the intent of this building was designed for or was used for in the past. So we could consider that a change of use by the zoning board or, or by myself. Uh, we could consider the fact that he's hauling seafood, uh, using the facility to store, uh, equipment that's associated with seafood as a change of occupancy for the building, along with a change of use, uh, by zoning standards. So, um, and he, we've discussed this early on. He's well aware of it. Uh, he was, he was doing real good. Um, he's getting a little sloppy. He's gotten, uh, sloppy over the years. Uh, and again, um, I think it's time we sent him for his own opinion.
So let me ask you a question. If there was a cease and desist, what does that do to your business in the meantime, waiting for a variance?
I can't, uh, I have no place to store our trucks. I don't have no place to, uh, fix anything, do anything inside the building. And there's, the thing is, if you send an inspector there to see what's being done, we repair, we repair pumps, we do maintenance on, on all kinds of stuff that comes from the boats.
So I, I, I understand that. And I, I understand that you're, you know, willing to, to work this out. And it's, like Mr. Hathaway said, he explains it to you, you correct it, but it's your employee. So I guess my next question would be, what are you telling your employees so that they stop doing this, what they're not supposed to be? How many, how many employees do you have?
Uh, four. I, I don't have any, there's no fish there. There's no crabs there. There's no product there.
So I think, so what I'm thinking, possibly, so he doesn't end up with a cease and desist and not be able to work for a month or, or two months. Cause I wouldn't, I want the neighbors to be happy. I don't want it, I don't want your business to cease operating for two months. Um, and it, where it's cold weather now, hopefully, you know, this might be a good time to do it. But maybe if you go for that variance and have proof that he's going for the variance, then we can have something documented of what can, specifically can and cannot be done at that building. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Um, and that gives time. I mean, you have to apply for it. It's gonna be a month or two, but we wanna get it done before it starts to get warm again. And then these things that if you are.
But you're not gonna have an issue. I, I, I guarantee you.
What's that? Which issue?
They're not gonna have an issue with, with smell.
But, so they're telling me that they still.
So it's, it's.
I, I don't.
What about the, uh, so?
So on top of that, I'm sorry, can I just, on top of that, can we also do an inspection there? And so that we can have everything?
I have it on a list, Counsel, to ask Victor to allow me to do an inspection.
Okay.
Of the entire property, inside the building and outside, um, based on the fact of the raccoons and.
And I, I would encourage him to do a pest inspection as well. The problem with the pest inspection is if he does one and there are rodents, all that's gonna do is send them to the neighbors. So we don't want that either.
He'll have to hire a, an exterminator to, to bait.
There's no, there's no rodents in here. I can't, I'm telling you.
Right, but they.
But you're gonna, they can go in. It's not a problem.
Okay. But they might be coming for the, the things that are outside. I mean, I'm assuming if you've been washing the trucks there for years, even though you have stopped, there's still gonna be debris that's just sitting there. I mean, the animals smelling it. I, I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be for, for a while, that they're gonna be able to, to seek that out and, and think that there is, you know, food there for them. Um, but, you know, I would say if you can, um, you know, speak with Mr. Hathaway, get the variance that you need.
Yeah.
And get a very clear description of what can and can't be done at that location, um, with respect to seafood.
As far as what you're requesting, um, how do you feel about the, the fact of a fifty-three foot box container, uh, with the refrigeration unit running?
No, I've gotten those calls.
Okay.
From the neighbors. If you have your windows open at night, I mean, that's.
I mean, I don't want that to be one thing that I'm gonna pick on, but there's, it's, that's the noise part of it. There's an odor part of it.
We have a noise ordinance that would address that.
Yeah, well, that's not gonna break, I, we don't have the equipment to test for noise for sound after 10:00 PM. So.
I get that, but I, but at the same time.
To break the decimals of an area in order to.
But we have, like, so, say we have, and this is another one, Counsel Pelletti, that he brings up, we've got the car washers that have the music playing, the, the, um, the vacuums going. And we've put time limits on, on when they can use their vacuums because it's right next to a multifamily that people are trying to sleep at night. I would think it would be the same thing for the refrigeration truck that's running all night. If you have your windows open, that's just, do you still have your refrigeration trucks there?
No, they're not running.
No longer?
No longer.
And will not be?
No.
So that's maybe something that we need laid out.
But I'm gonna explain, that, that building at one time had, like you said, hood ice cream was there. There was units in there that would make a lot more noise than what if a trailer, for truck.
But in the middle of the night?
Absolutely. So they had.
The freezer's not open during the night.
With the refrigeration, with the refrigeration.
So how would the freezers work? The free, the, the product?
The hood is open during the daytime and as well as coffee syrup is open during the daytime.
And there was no, and there was no refrigeration units running all night freezer?
Yeah.
How, how do they keep the ice cream going?
That whole, that whole unit on the side is a refrigeration.
On the side, right. The whole unit.
That whole thing is a refrigerator.
On, on the side of your, of your building.
But it doesn't.
But it didn't make noise. Not like the trucks running. They didn't have trucks with, with product that were running all night. But you're not gonna have those there anymore. So if we could have that laid out so that, you know, come July, we don't have them, an employee bringing a truck back there and then we're all over, I think the variance could lay out what can and can't be done? That would be my suggestion.
Do you, do you yield?
I yield.
So, um, I just have a hard time believing that there's no problem down there. There's no smell. This has been going on since two thousand.
That's why I asked for an inspection.
Well, yeah, but since 2018, they have, there is documented pictures of rats. You didn't know that there were raccoons living in your building. You found out today, you know? So there's a lot of problems down there.
They're not inside. They're, they're up on the roof.
Well, they're, they're, it looks like they're peeking out. They're saying hello. So I mean, there are, you have issues down there. So just come here and say to the, the people that live in a very densely populated neighborhood with ocean fish smells. I mean, there's pictures of crabs. To say that there's not an issue is a big problem. There was a motion on the floor made by Counsel Pellet, uh, Counsel Pereira to table the issue.
Can I say something?
Go ahead. I'll yield. Go ahead.
I'm a little confused because at first there's no product there. We just keep it stored. But then we've got a refrigeration unit that's running because obviously there's product in there. Why would it be running without product?
This was before, 2017, we first started. Not anymore.
I think you're best bet.
There hasn't been anything.
Is to do the assistant, cease and desist until we get this done because there's too many complaints. It's not like this has been going on for a year or two years. This has been going on since 2018. We're in 2023 and the neighbors need to do something. I mean, we, we need to help the neighbors and do something. If you wanna wait and let them fill out the paperwork to go and, and get a variance done, see what they say to variance